Each fund and what it earned in the month of June. And on that date, you can see the total that we had invested in June with the total interest earned on each fund and then the total for the year.
So it's shown we made eighty-five thousand four ninety-eight dollars from investments so far this year.
So far this year.
Okay, on those investments, that money, is it required by law, it goes back into the account, it comes out of, or can we appropriate something else?
Some funds, some funds are, but not all funds are. I prefer to put it all back into the individual fund so that we don't have to keep track of when the laws change.
Okay.
For different funds. So we just put it right back in the fund that it was invested.
We're not required to, that's what we do?
We're not required to for all of them.
Okay.
But to, to not have to track which ones have to be, it's just easier to put them all back in the fund.
What, what interest does that usually come out at just eighty-five roughly on return?
It's, it's been really low this year. Right now, yesterday it was point two six eight, I think, but it's still the best money we can get. And the, the best thing about this is, this money can go in one day and out the next. So that's, that's the advantage, the main advantage.
You put the money in, if you need it, you can get it out the next day.
So if we get money from the state for X, we could put it in an account and use that and get interest off it till we have to spend it out?
Yes, yes. And Amy and I have a pretty good system. She just runs a report. After she runs the claims, she tells me if she needs any money brought back in, and I just move it back in.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
We need to sign the ordinance when we close July the second because of the air conditioning in the, what room is that in?
The IT room where the servers are kept.
Was that in the basement?
It's down by the, when you're going into the stage auditorium area.
And so that, doing that, you had to shut down the whole courthouse to do that?
They had to move the servers completely out of the room to connect them, put the AT unit in and put the servers completely back in.
And they could've done that at night or something over the weekend?
All day weekend, you think it's gonna...
I know AT&T, when they was gonna change stuff over, they said come in at night or something to do it, so.
We'll get the ordinance for the next meeting.
Okay. That was July third, second.
Second.
Okay, on the open issues, the COVID-19, continue what we've been doing for two more weeks. And no one talked on it this morning, okay?
I'm from the health department.
Oh, I just, please, please come up there. Your mask up, back here.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Um, here, I don't know, I guess you're all aware, I made your copies of the four-point-five stage now. So everything is gonna continue as, pretty much as it was stage four, there was just some leniency on outdoor activities. Um, Dr. Albright agreed with what we produced this past week, so to continue with that, we have a total of fourteen cases now in Vermillion County, only one is active.
How many again, thirteen?
Fourteen. One is home recuperating, all the rest are recuperated. We've had no deaths. There was a total of twenty new cases last week in Vigo County and three hundred and thirty in the state. So it's something that we really need to watch. But as per Dr. Albright, just continues the way things are going right now.
So what's going on with the death rate?
Ours is zero.
I mean, statewide?
Uh, that I'm not for sure.
I mean, that's the thing, I like to hear it once the death rate, I mean, I don't want to hear it, but that's something we need to be looking at.
Yeah.
Because my, my understanding went from nine percent down to five percent in the last week.
Right, but the amount of cases have definitely gone up.
So.
I had a rumor the other day that when you go in the hospital, you're automatically not tagged with a computer system, you already got it, and at the end of the day, the doctor gotta check off who didn't really have it. Is that, is that true for that, I mean?
We're doing different statistics.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, just what, actually what count was, exactly what we did have or didn't have?
Yeah.
And the second thing, these parades coming up say you can't throw candy. If candy's in a plastic bag, like a baggie, is that still, that's still out? Okay.
It is contact.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, sure. Any other questions for the health department?
On your, your Facebook posting, could you put, when you put it out there, how many cases in Vermillion County, it's just a general, when you put it on it from a state, but could you list Vermillion County?
Yeah, well, if you open that up, it'll show you all of Vermillion County.
Okay.
You can open it up and it'll show exactly how many cases that we have.
Okay.
Thank you. IT update. Somebody here for the IT. We're now phoned up date. Community crossing grant, there's no money, it's not been...
Yeah, I got an update on that. I talked to them, talked to them yesterday, and they got, received the last paperwork on that, and we should have our million dollars within a month.
Thank you, Tim.
So.
August.
Uh, every month.
Tell me August.
That's a month. They, I talked to them yesterday, they received the paperwork they needed yesterday, and they said it would be processed within a month, we'll have that, so, pretty close, so.
Thank you. Energy conservers, Johnson Solutions?
They're not back with the results yet, that'll just stay on there until they...
The ordinance for twenty twenty dash two for requiring street signs and house numbers, is that ready?
I, yeah, you guys have had it.
Yeah, let's talk to them later.
I fixed a couple of typos that were in it, but otherwise, unless you wanna change something.
We'll pass it back to the meeting in a minute.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you make a motion, Jim, for it?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Paul Pierce Allen? Close, okay. Okay, position of ERC? Position of ERC?
Yeah, that's, um, the job Melissa and Lomond has to do.
Mm-hmm.
Guys have to see, decide what you're gonna do with it. Um, I did ask other counties, I didn't get any response. Vigo County has an engineer, so that's their ERC, and then one other county said their surveyor is their ERC, but no other counties responded.
Okay. Is that in her job description now?
See, before, Phyllis used to take care of it.
Okay. And Phyllis' position was what, auditor?
Yeah, and she just did it. It was just, you know, it wasn't her job, but she just did it. And, uh, now, give it to Melissa to do, and she says that she's got too many other jobs to do that. Bridge, uh, bridge work and, and, and the grants, she's taking care of all that, but she's wanting somebody else to take over.
And they're, they're looking at, will you form another position just to take care of that?
What she's wanting.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't need a full-time position to take care of that. Ain't no way.
She says she's no engineer and stuff like that, so that's why she was, she should've came up here today and explained what she...
Yeah, she's got to see, she, she should be here.
We'll table the next meeting, have her come?
Well, we need to come up with some type of direction we're going on so we get an answer.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, is it, if we check on the classification of her job description, would that be included in there somewhere, or not, or?
I would think it would've been, but... I can't see hiring someone just for that.
You want to ask her to come the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
I gotta go down there today, so I'll, I'll tell her at the next meeting.
You got that, Amy?
Traitor's office credit card agreement?
They still haven't heard back from them, with their legal.
Okay. Okay, last month we had letters in here for, on Calvary here north, requiring speed limit and no street truck signs. I think it'd be a good idea, no more we got that road down, we had trucks start going through there, and they've been doing it anyway, and it's nice through the road, and we don't want to tear it up, but that's...
Again, if you, if you're writing an ordinance, what's the penalty? Is there a penalty included in that ordinance? If you don't have a, if you've got an ordinance with no penalty? I can put one in if you want one. I, I sent you a draft ordinance to look at.
And I didn't think I sent the penalty in there.
Well, we put a speed limit there, the penalty would be whatever the state has for exceeding posted speed limit. But if you wanna do something else, we can do something.
But you gotta say, you got something that says no truck, so...
How do you enforce that if you have no, nothing in that writing? You know, as far as, I mean, twenty-five, fifty, I, I don't know, that's...
We, we got that down on O sixty-three, we got the signs up and...
Yeah, but we didn't have that, we had to go back and put that in.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, we got the same issue here.
What do you want it to be? Want your penalty on that road?
I, I don't know what it would be. I'm just saying, if you're saying no trucks, what's the fine for trucks being there?
And that, that would exempt like the garbage truck and delivery trucks, right?
If you want to.
Draft the same...
I'll do however you guys want.
Draft it the same way as you drafted on the other one on down on...
Yeah, I'll do the same.
Delivery trucks, school buses, trash trucks, I suppose that's all the weight anyway.
Farmers are gold, so make it... Let's keep it universal, whatever you did for, is that O sixty-three?
Yeah.
We use the same wording we did the last time, I think it'd be...
Keep it all the same, yeah.
So you're doing a speed limit and no semis?
Hmm, no trucks.
Or just no semis?
No trucks.
But you're allowing school buses, garbage trucks?
Delivery trucks, yeah.
Delivery trucks and the speed limit?
Essential service people go in there all the time, and you can't stop the farmers either, so, but if we have it in, at least we can enforce it if we need to.
Melissa?
On the ordinance about the trucks, and I understand exempting farmers, is there any penalty for damage to the road for if, if a farm truck crosses and their plow bounces and hits the road, tears it up? Is there any kind of penalty for that sort of thing?
We haven't had one.
I, I've seen that in several places, um, in the middle of the county, because that's where I live, where unintentionally the farmer hits, uh, an edge. Um, for instance, the new pavement in Fairview has an edge that's more than twelve inches at one point. If somebody dropped off that edge with their tire, the underside of their car's gonna tear up that pavement, so...
That, that, that won't be there in a week or so.
Right, I understand that.
They're gonna put, they're gonna put rock on the side of the road.
Right, I understand, that's a, I'm, in process thing, it's just, if you think of that location, say, a farmer goes across the road and their plow hits and tears up the road, and you have to send people out to fix it, um, is that something that should be considered?
Do we have to have a word for that, or are they...
Well, there could be a civil suit, or you could have an ordinance, either way.
Yeah, the same problem across my garage there, my real day weekend, someone lost a load of oil or fuel oil or something all down the, and no one's seen it. We're having a hard time getting the salt backed up, it's sunken, it's leaking through.
Yeah, if nobody sees it, then it really doesn't, I mean, you're not gonna have anybody to write a ticket for, or...
You gotta be there to see it happen.
Road up a bone though, uh, by the cemetery. A guy came out and turned his tractor around, he had his disc down, he tore the road up, uh, he, he repaired it.
So it's...
You have to catch him to do it. You, you would have to catch the person doing it, or somehow know who it was that did the damage.
For instance, if they just come to you and admit it and say, I damaged the road and I need the paper.
Yeah, man, where'd you get him to admit it? Now you're gonna have that.
If things are, admit it, and you don't catch him, you can't, you can't do anything about it. Okay.
Are you gonna table this?
No.
Do you have a penalty?
The penalty?
He's gonna add a penalty.
What do you want the penalty to be?
What is it on the...
It's whatever it is on that O sixty-three.
Okay.
Do you need to go ahead and vote on this now, or do we have to wait?
Well, let me, let me find that ordinance and see what the penalty is, and I'll update this, send an email to you guys, and if you're happy.
We have it two weeks in.
I will do my best.
Okay, thank you, girls. A new business, AEPNM Michigan, permit to work in right away. Tim, you got that there?
I got it here, but they're supposed to be here today this morning to...
You got a question, didn't you?
I got a question, because they're not, they're saying the area they're working in is just around Dana, but it goes all the way south, and it goes through the whole county, and they're only saying it's mostly part of the county. They're supposed to be here today. I don't know if he's got his tie messed up or what, and he's supposed to be here today.
When we go, in case he comes up. Forest Services, Jerry Hawkins?
Thanks, Tim. I'm Jerry Hawkins, I've appeared before you several times the last five or six years. I've worked for Performance Services for eighteen years, and my interest in the projects is not only in development of the project, but on taxpayer and municipalities in the county, so it's of interest to me, and I also serve on the council. I, I just requested five minutes because what I want...
Hey, Tim, can you come up to the podium so we can get recorded better?
Oh, sure, sure.
Sorry, I missed which project this is.
Beg pardon, Melissa?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand which project this is.
He's with Performance Services, Eng, and Energy Saving, Performance Services.
Yeah, let, let me, let me do that again.
Do it again, Jerry.
I'm Jerry Hawkins, I've been with Performance Services for several years, eighteen years. I've had an interest in this project for five or six years and followed it very carefully for two reasons. I'm interested in it from the point of what's developed at the J O, and secondly, I pay taxes in two municipalities and the county. I've served on the county council, so I know a little bit about how it works, and I appreciate all your efforts. My first request was simply to ask you to allow Performance Services to take a look at your facilities. I know Johnson Mellow's been here, and, uh, what we'd like to do is just give you another view of some possible energy conservation measures that you could use. I'm assuming that courthouse is your big one, the jail is the big one, but, but doing a little research since I put my request in, I found that in July of twenty sixteen, you advertised for Guarantee Energy Savings Project, RFQ for a project and a study, and at that time, we submitted AMRESCO, Mike, was it AMRESCO who submitted, and ESG. So, uh, what we'd like to do presently, we, we have a fairly good study of the mechanical needs of the jail. What we'd like to do with your permission is just to expand our, our, our search to take a look at the, this is your biggest, this is your other large facility, so with your permission, we would do that, it's no cost to you. I'm sure Johnson Mellow made a good presentation to you, it's a reputable company. There are some differences between what they do and what we do, but that's, that's my main request, is just to get your permission to expand our study to take a look at the courthouse and any other facilities that you'd like to have looked at. The county garages are probably not gonna be real cost benefit centers for you, but the jail and, and the courthouse certainly could. So if you're permission, we'd like to do that. Then I want, want to mention a couple of other things. What happened in twenty sixteen is, and you've got a copy of that advertised, but I just sent you the briefest blurb I could about the company. But what happened back in twenty sixteen, when you advertised, you got three proposals focused mainly on the jail. I've always been of the opinion that the jail could be put in tip-top shape for a lot less than twenty-two point five million. That's always been my condition. One thing about Guarantee Energy Savings Projects is fifteen percent of the total cost of the project can be in general construction. So if you do three, you end up with a three or four million dollar project, you're, you have a half a million dollars of that could be general construction, and I know there are needs over there besides the mechanical systems. Primarily, what we looked at at that time were the mechanical, electoral, plumbing systems, and made some recommendations. I think what happened is, I don't know if either of us, of the three companies, made a presentation to the J O committee at that time, I, I just don't remember, do you mind?
I don't.
Okay, but what I think happened is the project kinda took another turn, and then you began, you began to look at building on to the jail and that sort of thing. But, um, I stand by my word that, uh, we're pretty much convinced the mechanical systems could be retrofitted, other things could be fixed in the jail. What would happen, even if twenty sixteen, when, when those present, when those three proposals were received, at that time, you could've interviewed all three of the presenters, you could've selected a provider, it has to be an energy, an ESCO, an energy services company, and then I want to mention another thing here about the company. You could've selected one of those companies as your preferred ESCO, your energy services company to work with. Then you would've passed a resolution, and then... Then you would have passed the resolution and then